Call to order and confirm the appropriate meeting notice.
The meeting was noticed here at City Hall, the Piggly Wiggly and Dave's Ace Hardware.
Okay, thank you. Before we move any farther, I want to explain that this meeting is a joint meeting with the City Council and the Town of Milton Board so that we're represented by two separate bodies of government and so we also have two separate leaders. We have the mayor as well as the-
Chair.
Chair of the town, I wondered what you were called.[52.62][52.62](Laughter) Chair of the town board. And so if we have something that needs to be discussed in each of those bodies, then those people lead those discussions rather than, you know, it takes it out of the commission's position to lead those discussions. They need to be, or there's a vote when we get to the possible action section, it goes back to those separate bodies to deal with that. Approval of the agenda, if you would please do so in your separate groups.
Do we call each individual meeting to order them?
Yes.
Yeah, town board hasn't called order yet.
Oh, yes.
Deal with your agenda.
We haven't called either.
Yes.
Yes, she has.
I did.
That wasn't the fire commission meeting that you're calling to order?
No.
Oh, okay.
There is no fire commission meeting tonight.
Great.
So, do we have an approval of the agenda?
I'll move in.
Second. There's a motion, a second, any discussion or questions? All those in favor of approving the agenda?
Aye.
All those opposed? Okay, we have an agenda.
With that, I'll call the town board to order and confirmation of meeting notices.
Notice of the meeting was posted at the Lake House Inn, the First Community Bank and at the town.
Okay, and on the agenda for the town board?
Have a review of the agenda. Second.
One comment I want to make is the city may be interested in discussing future meeting dates during the discussion of the study. Their agenda shows a discussion portion and an action portion and they may wanted to discuss future meeting dates prior to any action they may be taking tonight. So, on our town agenda, items four and five, we may mix those two together for discussion purposes. So, we have a otherwise a motion to approve the agenda for the town. Any further discussion on that? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried.
Yes, and that was me too, after I talked about it, to combine three and four so that after the presentation of the information from Jeff, before we move on to a discussion, I would like to discuss the topics and information for future dates before we move on to discussing and prioritizing the information that and through the discussion that we have.
So, you're just going to tell me when? Are you trying to do it now? Or are you-
No, after we have the information that he's presented.
Okay. All right.
Okay.
All right, where can we go? You're on.
And my person who's running the PowerPoint just left.
Yeah, there you go.
Good evening, Jeff Romer with RW Management Group. What I'm going to do tonight is just kind of go over, briefly go over the report and how it's set up and I'll cover the agenda topics with you and show you the major recommendations and talk about those a little bit and then the next steps for you to take and go over that with you and then answer questions and comments that you have. You're going to do that, Dan? There we go. What we'll cover tonight is I'll cover the project goals, go over what we evaluated, go over the major recommendations, the benefits, and then what are the next steps? What happens after this? And then questions and comments. I'm not going to bore you to death with the PowerPoint and I'm not going to read the report to you, so. Basically, the project goals, go back that, go back one. Back.
I'll go back one more.
You missed one there. Missed one, there we go. The project goals were to assess the ability and effectiveness of the fire department, identify and make recommendations regarding fire EMS services and their delivery, and determine the next steps based on those findings. Go to the next step. No, you missed one there too. You must be hitting it twice. Going backwards. Okay. The project team that was involved in the entire study was Chief Lippincott, Administrative Assistant Jenny Lucas, Deputy Chief Chris Lucas, and Deputy Chief Pete Maury. They were involved in the entire project. Basically, the way the project went is that I came in, we did a project planning meeting, went over what we were going to try to accomplish and all the work tasks, set up interviews, started doing all the interviews, gathering all the documentation, and once I got all the information, came back to the project team and said, "Okay, here's what we got, here's the information we got, is this accurate?" And bounced it off of them to make sure it was accurate information. And then after that, I went back and put the recommendations together, also met with, we decided which jurisdictions we'd use as comparables, and I went and met with all those comparables, put all that information together in form of recommendations, came back and met with the project team again, and went over with them where we were heading with our recommendations, and then we put the whole report together. The project team got the draft report and then eventually the final report, which all of you got. So, they were very involved in the entire process, part of the entire process. It's up to you, but if you want, at the end of this, if you want to open that up to the project team for their comments, I think that may be beneficial for you too. Okay, next. The things we evaluate, we looked at governance and administration of the department, assessment and planning, the goals and objectives of the department, financial resources, different programs that the department manages and runs, their physical resources, human resources. Next slide. Essential resources, external resources, training and external system relations, which is how do they get along with police department, fire departments around them, how do they work with others, dispatch center. So, those are all the areas that we looked at. So, we looked at, we take a pretty comprehensive view of what the department's doing. I'm sure you've all read the report and you can see that the report's laid out that same way by those categories, and those are actually accreditation standard categories, national accreditation standards. So, now I'll just kind of go over some of the major recommendations. There's a lot of recommendations. I'm sure you've seen all the recommendations. There's a lot of work to be done, but what I'm going to hit tonight is just the major ones. Governance and administration. The concern that I have there, and I know it's confusing, and I know that the city received a kind of a reply early on from their attorney regarding some of those recommendations in governance and administration. The state of Wisconsin is set up basically to have departments, they kind of manage how police and fire departments are set up and how they're managed. And there's a set of statutes, 6213 basically covers it for cities and 61 for townships. And it talks about how they have to be set up, how a police and fire commission is set up and so forth. Your department is not set up that way. Your department is not, does not follow the statute, statutory setup for a fire department. What it follows is the attorney utilize statute 66, chapter 66, which is basically intergovernmental agreements. So, it's a chapter saying you can develop intergovernmental agreements, but it really doesn't go any further. It doesn't say, "If you do that, this is how your retirement system's going to be managed. This is how human resources have to be managed." It doesn't give you any statutory compliance for that. So, you're kind of set up like a fire district already. The commission is not like the State Police and Fire Commission. State Police and Fire Commission statutes call for five members on the commission appointed by the mayor or the town chair, and you can have a joint commission, but none of them can be elected officials. So, you're completely different than the way the statutory commission is set up. You're set up actually more like a district, but the state doesn't really recognize fire districts, and there's been a lot of attempts to make that happen. And basically, the fight against it from the state level is they do not want to create another taxing district, and that's what would happen if they allowed for fire districts. So, there's a lot of verbiage in there, a lot of information regarding your governance and administration. The problem it creates is what level of authority do you have? And what do you have for the commission? Who's got the liability? Who's got the responsibility? Who does the chief go to? Is it the town, the city, the commission? You know, who's liable for all that? Next slide. Some of the other recommendations, full-time fire chief. You're in a situation here where you are getting busier and busier. You have a large department. You have 54 members on the department and you have a part-time chief. So, you have somebody who's administrating a department with 54 members and he does it part-time. That's a real challenge. There are also, the other recommendation is for full-time shift commanders. You currently have four to five personnel on duty 24 hours a day. They were 12-hour shifts, but you have coverage for 24 hours. You do not have, technically, you do not have career people or full-time personnel managing anybody that's on duty during that time period and supervising. Administrative support structure, what I refer to there in the recommendations is because of the way you're set up, you have a situation where, you know, if I'm, I use, if I'm fire chief for a city like Green Bay or City of Appleton or even Village of Peewaqui, I have city administration to go to, and I have an HR director oftentimes, or I have a city administrator, or I have a clerk. I have people to go to when there's different areas that I have to deal with managing that department. You're in a situation here where you've got 54 members to manage and really, who does the chief go to? You know, the way you're set up, technically, I would say he'd have to go to the commission for that guidance. You know, are the commission members around full-time? You know, are you available? Do you have that kind of background to give him the assistance he needs? So, I think there's some concern regarding where the support services are coming from. Financial audits, there's a recommendation in there. The city currently is handling the finances, basically paying the bills for the department. There is not, they're not part of the annual audit, so annual audits are not being done on the fire department, and that's extremely important. Another major recommendation is there needs to be an implementation plan that everybody agrees on for the new station. How is that going to happen? When is it going to happen? What are the steps you're going to take to make that happen? Because there's a lot that has to be done. If you see in the study with the cost analysis and the budget portion of the study, actually lay out some of those costs, some of those large costs that you're going to deal with with construction and how, you don't wait till the year that you're going to build it and say, "Okay, now they're all going to come this year." There's a lot of work that has to be done ahead of time, so there needs to be some planning for that. There needs to be a risk assessment and standards of cover established. This is not uncommon, unfortunately, and especially when you have part-time administration running a department. A risk assessment is an assessment where they assess all of the risks in their coverage area and put them at different levels and decide what kind of resources they need to fight fires, deal with major mass casualty incidents, anything like that. And they put that all in a plan so they know if they get a call at this location or this type of fire or this type of incident, accident, this is what should be responding to it. And then they can establish their standards of cover. That also gives them a basis to determine, is four or five personnel on duty the right number? You know, could it be three? Could it be seven? You know, what's the right number? That is not in place and then that needs to be accomplished. One of the recommendations is joint strategic planning. I think that especially with all of you sitting here, I think one of the most important things that needs to happen is that all of you need to work together and do strategic planning together. City's done some strategic planning, department's done some of their own strategic planning, town, I'm not sure if you've done some, but you probably have your own areas of strategic planning, but nobody's worked together to create a strategic plan from all of you saying, "This is where we want the fire department to go, and this is our vision and this is what we want you to strive for." Next one. So, those are some of the major recommendations. The benefits that you get by implementing those recommendations are you improve the confidence and the abilities of the department. The department's doing a good job. The department has a good reputation out there, but they can easily run into a situation, and it happens quickly, and it just takes one incident, where there's not enough management around, there's not enough supervision, there's not enough trained personnel. The way you staff is progressive from the standpoint that you have paid on premise and you have somebody at the station, but you can have a situation where you're paid on premise and your four or five personnel at the station are not officers and may not be trained in incident command system and may not have any training in human resources and may not have any leadership training, and that's when you get the big call. Or you get a minor incident that becomes a huge incident because it's not handled properly. So, it also helps you, it gives them a long-term strategic approach. You know, when we have that, if you do that joint strategic planning, everybody's on the same line. Everybody knows where they want this department to go. I know it's not necessarily happening here, but oftentimes, you know, each individual town board member and each individual council member and the fire department all have 15 different ideas where they think this department should be going, and nobody's on the same song sheet and not working together. So, I think that's extremely important. It would improve their coordination, improve the level of service that they give. It would stabilize the department growth over the next 10 years if you have a strategic plan, and economically, you know that this is the cap. You know, this is all we can afford over the next 10 years, and the only increase is we can afford over the next 10 years. Now, you plan for that. What can be done with that amount of money and how can we do it? And I think that it would also improve the trust in working relationships. You know, I think that that's, can be an issue and it's often an issue, especially with joint departments. You know, town has different agendas and different things going on in the township. The city has different ideas on what should be happening and things going on, and the fire department has different ideas. And if you're not planning together and working together, you're struggling and you're spinning your wheels, wasting your time dealing with small fires instead of dealing with what the department should be handling. So, those are some of the big recommendations, the big benefits that we see. What's next is you need, as both the council and the board and the commission, all need to decide, are you going to adopt the study recommendations? Are you going to create a project team, start moving forward and start implementing recommendations? And that doesn't necessarily mean you have to take the whole study and say, "We're going to do all the recommendations," but you know, a lot of those recommendations go together. So, you've got to take a really good look at that and make that decision and give the department some direction and work on it with the project team and work on an implementation plan, appoint a project manager, and then start implementing and make it happen. That's it in a nutshell. Questions and comments? Yes?
That's where we were going to stop right now before we move along with it. That's where we were going to stop before we move along and so that we can kind of define what our discussions are going to be and when they're going to take place. I'm not cutting you off, but, well, I did. But the idea is to kind of define how we're going to set up our discussions so that they're not just all over the place, and we want to make sure that we can have everyone prepared for each of those discussions so that if we need to have other resources available to help us with those discussions, we can have them with us.
Teresa, may I ask a question first because on, let's see, chapter two, operational two dash 11. I had a question under your findings. It said, "The mobile data system is underutilized by the department." Just what did you mean by that?
The mobile data system is a system that's throughout the county. It's available throughout the county. A fully utilized system would have laptops in every piece of apparatus, every piece of equipment, and when they respond, instead of going on the radio, they would just hit a button saying they're en route and it goes right to dispatch when they get on scene. And a lot of the communications and information regarding the call would come right through the mobile data terminal right in the apparatus. That's happening on a few pieces of apparatus, not completely through the department right now.
Okay, thank you.
These are the type of questions I would encourage is directly related to the study itself and what, understanding the study that's been presented, those kind of questions?
Right. Those are the questions that will occur, that we're looking for tonight while Jeff is here to make sure that you can ask the questions to clarify anything that you have found in the study in addition to questions about the recommendations that the RW management have made and to ask why the recommendations are there, how would they prioritize them, you know, anything about the study and the analysis. Then we were looking at, beyond that though, there were specific recommendations that clearly need a more in-depth discussion, one of which had to do with governance, and that needed perhaps more support with that discussion. And so, we were looking at trying to get together again on Wednesday, August 26th, which would allow the city council and the town board and anyone else that wanted to research it prior to that meeting, and if you wanted to bring anyone with you to that meeting to provide any research, to share with that, as well as the fire department, then we could have a better discussion rather than just kind of shoot out questions tonight that perhaps people don't understand the background or the answers and so forth. So, I think that if we can agree on Wednesday, the 26th, that would be great.
Are you saying, will Jeff be here at that time then?
Well, that's up to us to invite him.
What, do we have to pay you more money?[1510.01][1510.01](Laughter)
You brought your checkbook, okay.
Just signed the city's life away there.
Well, that's what we have to decide.
Teresa, I think what you're suggesting is a discussion on attempting to implement any of the recommendations is a future date to talk about those details and research.
Well, yeah, I think we need to determine our governments before we can make any decisions beyond this. You know, we need to know who's running the show here before we can decide our budgets or anything.
So, you're thinking that the focus of the August 26th meeting would just be that?
Well, yeah.
For the most part. Oh, I just thought of clarification.
You know, unless it's, if it's a simple decision, we could move it on. There are things beyond this we're going to discuss and we can, if we decide that in 15 minutes, then we have some other items that we do need to discuss, which include the budget and some other items that I have here, then we can start moving on to those as well.
Okay.
So, we-
Primary, primarily the goal would be to deal with the government.
Yes.
Can we have an attorney present?
Well, that's, yeah, what I, and I talked to Brian about that too, but I've already talked to Al about it and suggested that we need to have that research background here. And Lauren may want to consider some type of preparation for it from a fire department background perspective, and if we want to have Jeff here, but maybe you want to look into that and see what it entails.
For the town board, is, does the August 26th work for everybody?
It does work.
It will.
So, for the town, that would work.
Can I do-
Clerk, our clerk, are you available, 23rd?
(Laughter) Kirby, your enthusiasm.
I'm trying.
Dave, can Dave hear us? Dave, can you hear us?
Yes.
Okay.
Yeah.
Okay.
You thinking about seven o'clock here then for that meeting?
I thought it earlier.
Whatever.
Can people meet earlier or is seven o'clock-
Earlier would be preferable, but it doesn't really matter.
Is that the earliest?
My opinion doesn't really count.
Do people prefer six, 6:30?
Six.
Six?
Six o'clock it is. Do we have to take motion?
Yes.
I don't know.
Well, we need to separately.
Fine, I can just call a meeting. I as chair.
I'll take a motion to, for the council to jointly meet with the Town of Milton on August 26th at 6:00 PM.
Mm-hmm.
If there's a motion, a second, any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? Okay, the motion carries and we will meet August 26th jointly with the Town of Milton. And what is the location?
Here.
Okay.
Okay, then the other idea was to have the fire commission start next week as part of their discussion with Dan present, Lauren, to discuss the 2005 budget needs because we had talked about, 2005, what we need to kind of patch up the 2015 budget. We had talked about leaving that until August.
There's two points to that comment. One is assuming we're going to operate the way we are through the end of this year, and one would be, another would be if we implemented any- And one would be, another would be if we implemented any recommendations earlier than that and how that might influence a budget. We hadn't had that discussion at all. That's just been brought up by the implementation plan recommended by the study, that there may be some influence if we're interested in implementing anything else on the budget for 2015.
I have no following.
There are recommendations in the study to implement certain things in 2015 that might potentially add to the overall fire budget, department budget. But that depends on whether or not we implement any of those cost factors this year.
Okay.
But we haven't had that discussion at all. But what we have had discussion on is learning where we thought we would be operating the way we have been recently.
I think the point that Teresa was trying to hit home is that if we don't, if we don't start the discussion now, what we do know is that we're $160,000 to $170,000 short. And by the time mid-October comes, if we don't do anything, there won't be any cash in the checkbook. And so, we know that you guys have to secure financing to help with that shortfall. So, next week, I think we'd talk about timing issues of when you guys, when the town would be able to procure some financing to provide an additional cash infusion into the department. And if we don't have that discussion next week, then when? Because we know you guys meet that first Monday of every month and realize you can have special meetings and stuff, but trying to be cognizant of that.
It's the same thing.
Yeah. Just trying to be cognizant of that piece, too.
So we'll start next Wednesday. And then, all right, on the 26th, depending on the length of the discussion regarding the governance, if we are able to start a discussion regarding the 2016 budget preparation, we can do that. And if not, I was looking at Thursday, September 10th. I don't know if people are able to make that date or pencil it in if we need it.
Got six again.
Six o'clock on the 10th.
For the town board, how does that date look for everybody?
It's okay with me.
So that, again, that would be a meeting if we found what to be necessary, but further discussions in general?
Yes, and definitely regarding the 2016 budget if we need it.
And this is another joint city?
Joint, yeah.
Do you want to motion or do you want to wait till the next meeting?
Let's wait till the next meeting. But do pencil it in to your calendars.
So again, you're proposing that the August 26th and the September 10th meetings would be here at the city council chambers, although next Wednesday are regular scheduled. Fire Commission meeting, being an alternate month, would be at the town hall as scheduled.
Correct. Okay. Now you're on. Sorry about that.
I have some questions about the study. Do you need reference to, for the scheduling for shift commanders? Could one of those commanders be the chief?
That's not the recommendation.
So it would be, the chief would be in addition to that?
Right.
And then my other question is, you also referenced the fire districts. But then, have we estimated budgets from these other cities here? Are these actual city departments that you referenced in the budgeting section or are those fire districts? The P.O.A., even fire, like, that are...
There's actually a combination. Some are, there are some of both in there, but they're similar sized departments and similar type of responses.
Do they have, do they have fire commissions in the comparables?
I didn't go there.
Okay.
I didn't ask that question. So, but I'm, I know some of them do. I'm not sure about all of them. And statutory fire commissions.
In the third to last line on that table, it says governance, so it explains what it is, if it's a village or a fire district or a city. So it's right in that table.
Yep.
But you could have, like...
First question was...
Couldn't you have a fire commission? Like, I mean, if the city, I mean, like, we have a police department and we have a police commission and it's under the City of Milton, so couldn't you have the same thing with a city and a fire commission?
Yes. You mean a statutory police and fire commission? You're called a fire commission and that's, I know it gets confusing, but you're set up as a fire commission to manage the fire district or, it's not a district, but the two, the town and the city. And it doesn't follow the statutes for a police and fire commission or a separate fire commission, according to statutes. You can have a joint fire commission that meets the statutes. It would be five people appointed. It would be a joint appointment between the town chair and the mayor, but they can't be elected personnel.
So, what my question was, and these other comparables that could be taking place, but you, but we don't know?
Yeah, if they say village, if they're a village or a city, they have a statutory fire commission.
Oh, okay, all right.
The districts, I'm not sure about. I didn't ask that specific question.
Okay, thank you.
What would be the benefit of reorganizing to be recognized by the state and not operate in the manner in which we do?
Okay, we're delving into the other discussions, so let's save that for a different meeting.
Could I ask another one?
Sure.
In Chapter Four under the estimated budget, I was just reading through and basically just feel like I'm missing something of this sentence and I just want to make sure I got it right. Providing city and town management with timely or accurate information and decision-making tools which should result in increase...
Under the benefits, are you talking? Looks like I stopped my thought right there.
Oh, I'm not correct.
Yeah. It should result in better coordination, better management practice. Right now, what's happening is there's confusion as to, there has been confusion as to who gets the reports, who doesn't get the reports. Sometimes the commission gets everything, but it doesn't get back to the full council, doesn't get back to the town board, doesn't get to town administration or city administration. So, it would be improved in coordination.
So I had sent you questions earlier and I wanted the, I guess I wanted the board to hear the answers, so, do you want me to ask them to you again or should I just read the answers that you gave me?
You can, you can read the answers or you could send this to them, whichever.
Okay. Well, one question I guess for, that I, I had asked him was, what are the possible ramifications if we don't implement these recommendations? Because that's, I mean, that's an option for us and I wanted to know what could the possible results be. "The recommendations are based on national standards and while these standards are not mandated by law, they are and have been held up on court in regards to liability. Making no changes in governance creates several possible ramifications. No legal basis for the department, W.R.S. issues, authority liability and human resource policy concerns. The department is currently run with only part-time personnel and it's difficult to keep everyone current on best practices and management leadership skill sets and knowledgeable regarding human resource policies and that can lead to major legal costs and confusion." So, and I can send you all the questions and the answers, but I want us to keep that in the back of our minds, that maybe we can't implement them all quickly as we want, but we really do have to take it seriously to look at the recommendations that are made.
Was that the only question? Because I kind of feel like since we're all together and the question's directed at Jeff, then maybe we should all bring the questions and the answers, all of them.
Okay.
There's a lot of them. Do you want me to read them?
Go ahead and read them. Go ahead. I was, I guess I was the only one that had ten questions, so...
The first question was, "I think there is concern among some folks regarding comments in the report regarding structure of commission. I've explained to some that the information given to you was not complete and you recommended we contact our attorney. We have done that and received a memo from him. She asked if I got a copy." And, this is not, so basically, the answer to that question was, "All of the comments in the report were based on the latest information. There was some confusion before, when the draft report first came out of the first recommendations. I, nobody, I had not received the bylaws for the commission." So I was under the impression that the bylaws, the only bylaws I saw were for the association and that they were running the commission, which is not the case. And that's what the attorney received initially. The problem I have, no matter, you know, and I looked through the whole memo from the attorney, is that I still feel that there's still no statutory basis for the formation of the department. He utilized a statute that is intergovernmental agreements. And basically, all it says is, "You can have intergovernmental agreements." But that doesn't give you any definition as to how a fire department or a police department functions underneath those agreements. And I'll give you a simple example, it's just one example. And we talked about this at the project team level, too. If, if I'm a firefighter and I get disciplined, I do something stupid, not that a firefighter ever would, but let's say I do, and the chief wants to discipline me. In the statutory structure of a police and fire commission, if the chief would file charges, if the chief wants me to have time off, if it's a bad enough decision that I made, that he wants me to have time off, he has to file charges with that commission. And the commission becomes a hearing board for those charges. And they make a decision, an objective decision, not politically influenced and not influenced by the chief, as to whether or not they're going to uphold that disciplined decision. In your situation, you have a commission that runs the department, that manages the everyday issues in that department. So you have a completely different relationship than a fire commission by statutes would have. And now, if I'm that same firefighter and I get disciplined, and you guys close your ears, I don't want to take it to that commission. And I'm probably not going to take it to the commission because I feel the commission's going to be biased. So now where does it go? You know, it doesn't go to the city police commission, it doesn't go to the town board, it probably goes to circuit court, but there's no, there's no definition of what happens with that discipline. So that becomes extremely difficult. You know, and the standards, the standards, operating guidelines that are developed and I'm supposed to be following that I didn't follow and that's why I got disciplined, the commission approved. You know, those are your guidelines. So it's very, it puts discipline in a whole different light and causes issues. If that makes sense? Want to hear the rest of the questions?
It's up to you guys if you want to hear them. There's like 15, right?
She felt I had nothing to do all day today. There was a question as to whether or not that there may be some pushback regarding recommendations and whether or not I'm used, I'm probably used in these situations. Yes, I am. But it's also important to note, and what I stated there is, it's important to note that the entire project team agrees and supports the recommendations. And they're here tonight if you wanted to talk with them. It's a difficult thing and all of you, I'm sure, are aware of it and I know that there was some discernment or concern from the fire department relating to bringing a consultant in. And I even think, I even told you in the proposal meeting, I actually do a presentation to fire chiefs, says, the name of the presentation is, "Help, Here Comes a Consultant," because they're scared to death when a consultant comes in. Because there's a lot of things to review and you can see in the report, we review every part of that department. So they're really getting looked at and, you know, under a microscope and it's very difficult and very stressful. But ideally, and the good thing about the fact that they understood it and were part of the entire process, they, they looked at it more as an educational process and realized that they need to get there and that these recommendations make sense. So I think that's a very positive thing. It was a question on, "I would like more details on staffing recommendations. I'm confused over how we are staffing. What is the best practice or how other facilities similar to our staff? What criteria are used to determine staffing levels and what criteria are we using?" The department's staffing of paid-on-premise personnel, which basically means the paid-on-call personnel are now required to sign up for so many 12-hour shifts in a month to cover the station. That is actually a very progressive and effective way to provide full-time coverage. The staffing recommendation that we made in the study is that the chief and shift commanders become full-time positions. And the reason for that was to properly and effectively perform the duties of a fire chief and provide onsite management of daily operations. I can, I've been there, I can tell you firsthand and I'm sure most of you have seen it. There are a lot of responsibilities and a lot of liabilities on the fire chief. There's a lot of work to be done. I, you know, whether it's a small volunteer department that goes on, you know, five calls a month, or a department your size, or a department the size of Green Bay, there is a lot of work that has to get done. And it's very difficult, nowadays, it's extremely difficult for a chief to do that on a part-time basis and get that work done. And even as simple, and all of you have probably experienced it, the simple things like, everybody expects, this always amazes me, but all of you expect the chief to be sitting at the desk waiting for your phone call. Well, when he's part-time, he's not there half the time. And when he is there half the time, he's also responding to calls and involved in calls and isn't in the office. So even returning phone calls, returning emails, little things like that become huge things when you have somebody that's not there all the time. And it's the same as far as the shift commanders go, and I touched on this a little bit before. If they're, right now, you have, you could have four, brand new, they may be certified, they may have the class, but you could have four brand-new firefighters or four brand-new EMTs working that station who know absolutely nothing about incident command system, absolutely nothing about leadership, nothing about interpersonal skills and dealing with the public a lot of times. And that's the reason that, you know, you really need somebody professional there that's going to be there, that can answer those questions and handle those situations. I can tell you that, you know, in a 24-hour period, there are a ton of things that come up and every day it's something different. And there's issues constantly and you need somebody management-wise to manage that. Another question was, "How does our equipment stack up against comparable to..." Another question was, how does our equipment stack up against comparable departments? Very well. I don't think you should buy anything for the next 20 years. I didn't say that, Chief.
Thank you.
Okay, just to clarify my interpretation?
There, there is adequate equipment and it's kept up in good shape on the department. What are the possible ramifications if you don't implement recommendations? We talked about that already, I went through that one. What do you see as the biggest barriers to implementing the recommendations? This is where I get really blunt, so don't kill the messenger. Trust and politics. Department won't have an issue implementing the recommendations, you will have issues implementing the recommendations. And a lot of it will have to do with, does everybody trust each other? Is everybody willing to work together? What's the best way to do this? And, you know, the commission, the board, the council need to stand up together, trust each other, and lead this department in the right direction.
Interesting that you didn't add money to that.
Pardon?
Interesting that you did not add money to that.
Well, money's part of it, but I honestly, you know, I, I do look at that, I fully understand that. Remember, I've been in these shoes.
I'm not disputing that.
Yeah, and, and I, and I, the recommendations are really not designed for you to spend a ton of money.
Full-time chief and three full-time or four full-time, I'm looking at staffing changes personally.
Right.
But they're significant, staffing changes.
Yes, but you're already staffing, you don't, the numbers don't change.
The chief is full-time right now?
No, the chief is not. That number changes. The, the shift commanders would be part of the, the minimum staffing that you currently have.
Understood, but right now, and I may be wrong, the chief has taken out of those numbers. What you're saying, what I heard anyway, what I believe I read, was that that would be, the chief would be out of those numbers completely, like he would not even participate in calls, is that?
No, that's not true. And he's, he's really not part of those numbers now, your minimum staffing, he's not part of, he's not counted in that now.
Well, now I understand that. But we're adding significant amount of people.
But, so that, that was my biggest concern, and that's the struggle that you'll have. How have other departments' commissions responded to evaluations that RW has completed? We talked a little bit about this in the, in the proposal presentation. We, I, I don't, I don't want to come here and waste my time and your money and your time and the department's time and give you a report that doesn't make sense to implement. We do our best to make, give you the best recommendations that will help your citizens and help you and your department. And we try to make them as realistic as possible and, and get you moving in, in that right direction. We have, I, I've always meant to do this and I've yet to do it. We have close to 200 clients over the 17 years that I've been doing consulting. And I want to go through my list and I want to highlight the ones that have, we've been repeat, we've done more work helping them implement, or we've done other projects for them. And I'm thinking, I don't know this for a fact because I haven't looked at every single one, it's well over 50%. So I would say that I'm very comfortable saying that the majority of the recommendations that we make on these studies and departments are implemented in most departments. Next question was, I would like our commissioners to attend training in the fall offered by the League of Municipalities. What are your thoughts on this? Is it common for commissioners to attend training? Is this a good practice? My answer was yes, it's a great class. Been to the class, I've set it up for police and fire commission members. The problem is, you aren't a police and fire commission by statute and the class is designed to teach you how to be a commission by statute, but you don't fit that. So it'd be good, be good information either way, especially as you're going through this governance issue. It'll give you a clear understanding of how, how you're different. Do you have concerns with city continuing with assisting on the financial bookkeeping end? No, not at all. I actually think that it's much easier to have a municipal department and have those resources, and I talked about this a little bit before, to have those resources. Have somebody you can go to for HR questions. Have somebody you can go to for financial guidance and assistance. Have somebody that's working with you the same way they work with all the other department heads or the town works with their department heads. I think that makes it a lot easier. Where should our fire commission records be stored? For example, bylaws, et cetera, physical location or on shared computer files? Goes right back to the governance issue. Based on how you're set up currently, I would say that the commission would be designated keeper of the records. So commission members are responsible for those records, which means if there's record requests, you have to handle that properly and deal with those issues. Because they're not city records and they're not town records.
Does Beck, if you could back up just a little bit about the accounting services? In your report, you did mention several times auditing practices?
Uh huh. Yeah, that should happen. And it, it could easily be done as part of, like if the city doing it right now, it could be part of their annual audit. It could be added onto their annual audit. They, all of their departments get audited annually. I'm assuming the town, same situation, you get annual audits?
No.
No? Okay.
Well, there's different levels of audit service, but, I mean, we have an accountant service, but since our duties are separated, we aren't regularly audited, a full audit as a town.
You know, I, I know, I know audits aren't cheap, but not doing audits is far more expensive. And I, we, we, we get involved in some of that and we've actually had projects where there have been personnel taking money and it wasn't caught in the audit and they weren't doing audits, annual audits and, you know, the audits protect the department, they protect everybody that's involved in it, protects the town, protects the city.
One of the reasons I thought we were, I guess I remember one year it was a administrator that he said something.
They'll do a cursory look at it, but they aren't issuing an audit opinion. It's reported as a, like a fiduciary fund in the city, which, but they aren't issuing an actual audit opinion on it and they aren't doing any test of controls, they aren't doing any of the normal stuff. So from, from a pure standpoint, Jeff is correct.
And we would agree that they would be.
Next question was, our new police chief has excellent training in emergency management. Could we have co-directors of emergency management? Yes. As a matter of fact, when I was in Deepwater as interim not too long ago, that's exactly how we set it up. We had, I was there as fire chief and I was the emergency management director and the police chief was emergency management coordinator. So we both worked together. When I was with the city of Green Bay, I did the same thing with Brown County. We actually worked a joint emergency operations center because 90% of the time that it was activated, it had to do with the city. So they didn't really want us to have our own, they wanted us to work together with them. And I was emergency management director for the city and there was a county emergency management director. And if the city activated the center, I was the director, he was the coordinator. If it was a county-activated situation, he was a coordinator, he was the director and I was the coordinator and it worked out great. So that, that is a good thing. If you were a fire chief, what is the first thing you would do? I stated that I would establish statutory governance and rebuild the trust between the department, council, town board, and commission. So those are the questions.
The numbers that you use, were these actual or budgeted and then any particular year or, I mean, how, how recent is this?
Yes, it was last year's, it was 2014, and they were actuals.
And then you chose, I don't know what, why you chose the, the ones that you did and it's, it's really a tier nor there. Amongst your studies and, and the other cities that are around this area, our, our total budget in this particular year was significantly lower than all these other ones. Are there other ones comparable to ours in that regard?
I think, looking at the comparables, I think you're, you are doing really well. Your budget is very economical for what you provide. If you look at, if you look at Peewalki, and that's probably the best example I can use, right next to Milton, it's not so much that the population drives the budget, it is more the number of full-time personnel. You know, look at the difference in those budgets and they have, you know, 25 full-time personnel, you don't have any. I mean, that's, that's a huge difference.
Well, the 2,000 calls probably come into play, too.
Right, right. Well, they're, they're fully staffing two stations, you know, an engine and an ambulance at two stations, you're staffing one. And they're doing it with, they, they do paid on-premise there also.
Well, I feel that the, there is some, I don't know what the right term would be, some skewed to the numbers here, but when you used a population served of 11,000 some odd people, that includes contracted municipalities.
Uh huh, yes, it does.
So, and?
Same with the other districts on there. They, some of them are, kind of have contracts, too.
Okay, so those numbers, that population is part of that?
Yep, it's their coverage area.
Okay, because my next comment was going to be that if you were to look at traditional townships as opposed to city infrastructures, that, that would be different as well as far as?
Not necessarily. It depends more and again, how many full-time personnel they have. And a good example is Peewalki again, although they're not, they're fighting over this right now. But the, the town contracts with the city. Actually, it's the village contracts with the city for fire protection. And the city is much bigger population and they've wanted full-time and they wanted paramedics and they wanted rapid response and they wanted second station. And now that they have all that, they're saying, well, we want to pay the same as a community that doesn't have any full-time people and it doesn't work that way.
The village is saying they want that?
Uh huh.
But the village was the one?
Right. Different board, it's changed over the years.
One thing that I will, just to Jeremy's point, just so, so we are looking at it all on the same page, that 705,000 number was, was the budgeted number. The actual number is going to be much closer to that Bellevue number. It's going to be over 900,000. That's what we'll actually end up spending this year.
That's 215, that's 214.
These are 214.
Okay, so, so.
So it's still 8,000.
So yeah, you saw you'd add another 90,000. Yeah, yeah.
Okay.
So that's budget versus, just so we're, we're clear. So this year, it's going to be much, it's going to be closer to 900,000. As, as from budget to actual.
Could you explain a little more? You said that the state does not recognize fire districts, but you have one, the town of Beloit here, and I know we have Edgerton, which is right near us, that has fire district.
I believe it, not a fire district.
That's, oh, I'm sorry. Well, it says Fire District Board Municipal, that's what it says right here.
They have the town board as their, their.
Their oversight, right?
Yeah, there's no Fire District Board in the town of Beloit. They only, they contract with the township and part of New York Township, but they don't, neither one of those have any involvement in the function of the governance.
Okay, so what about Edgerton as a fire district? You said the state does not recognize fire districts?
Not in the statutes, they don't. There are fire districts, but they're not recognized in the statutes, they don't fall in the statutory guidelines.
So they don't tell them what operating?
The state?
But that's a liability. Or it's, that's a, for both town, city.
Yes.
But the statutes do recognize joint fire departments.
They allow you to create a joint fire department?
Yes.
They don't, they don't lay out any rules relating to how you need to function HR-wise and?
Hence your recommendation that apply it to something that has better rules and guidelines.
Right, right.
So the document within chapter four, section four, is incorrect for Beloit Town Board because it's Fire District Board Dash Municipal.
They, they're municipal, but they, they have a fire district board that the chief answers to.
You're not considering fire district?
No. Well, I, yeah.
They're not, they're not considered. It's, they're municipal, right, they're municipal, they belong to the township. And it's probably a misnomer to say Fire District Board.
That's what they call them.
But that's what they call them. I think one thing, I don't mean to interrupt, but the Edgerton Fire District is, is basically run the way we do our, our system right now, that they all go back to their, their boards because none of, the actual district is not attached. It's a, it's a combined fire department with all those townships and the city, but they still have to pay the budget back to their own chief of management to fund it. And that's one of the big contentions over there right now, is how it's being funded.
I, I know that they're having some discussion, at least some people over there are, about the value of a district for different reasons, but, or for, for, not just for one reason.
The numbers aren't always real straightforward to get. An example is, I went to the dispatch center to get numbers and the numbers were lower than actual here because they don't count it if they go on a MABUS call to another jurisdiction. It's that other jurisdiction's call, it's not a call number for Milton. So. call, it's not a call number for Milton, so...
What happens is, they generate a REM number for us, but it's listed under the other jurisdiction, so we don't, we don't get to count from it, it'll be the same way, we take ours off of the actual fire reports that are done. And next Wednesday is here at the town hall, rather, the 26th will be here.
Teresa, I just, were you going to look for a motion to adjourn? Were you going to look for a motion to adjourn? Oh, before you do that, if I could just make a comment. Throughout this process, just so everybody's aware, throughout this process, Jeff has been an excellent consultant in this group, working with not only city staff, but the elected officials, so, you know, I appreciate his commitment to this, and, you know, his openness and willing to answer questions and kind of go above and beyond, you know, at the last minute with Anisa's roll of questions and things like that, you know. He's been very responsive throughout this process, so, you know, I, from the city's standpoint, I appreciate, you know, his work on this, and I know the fire department does as well, it's been, you know, a great learning experience for all of us, and, you know, one of the things that came out of this, it was a good thing by omission. One of the things that I don't want everybody to lose sight of here, and I talked about this with Dave Adams today, and Teresa, and Anisa, we're in a fortunate position where we don't have any recommendations in here that talk about poor service delivery. We have excellent service delivery, an excellent group of people who are working hard to do what they can with what they have, so that's extremely important. We're really fortunate that we're not in a position where we're talking about, oh, you know, not only do we not have any money, but even the services that are being delivered are very good. We're very fortunate in that, so I just don't want that to be lost sight of in this process, because it is, we are fortunate, and the budget numbers, it is a very affordable cost to us, and we want to make sure that, you know, we are mindful of that, but, you know, to be thoughtful in how we look at implementing this plan, but we're very fortunate in the fact that we have a group of people where we don't have to worry about the service that's being delivered, because it's being delivered in a very effective and efficient and good manner. So, I just think that that's important to point out throughout this process. A lot of recommendations, but, you know, a lot of it's on us, so...
I would agree. I pointed out that what really was really found here, and kind of... ...thoughts, actions, so, right, pointing that out. I have found that this is a lot of valuable information that I had hoped we would find, so I do appreciate that.
Yes, and I would too appreciate it, or state that I appreciated. I get too anal about getting through the meeting, but I also want to thank those of you that served on the advisory committee, because that was a lot of work, and appreciate your work to make sure that all of the honesty of what was happening and making sure that everything came out, and you looked at everything very objective, because that, too, is hard to do sometimes, to look at everything you're involved in and say, yeah, that is the way it looks, and, yeah, we, you know, to take a real clean look at everything is tough, so, thanks for everyone.
And I know from the standpoint of the fire department, we too felt that Jeff was real easy to work with, and we really had a lot of good times as we were going through this, and it was an eye-opening experience, and it brought things to light that we all have taken steps already to implement some of these things. And I just want to thank the project team, too, because Jenny put a tremendous amount of work into this, Chris went back with all the training records and all the other things that I've asked for Pete and Chris to bring up, so they did a lot of work on their own time to pull this all together, and I really appreciate it.
I love your saying, Jeff, too, I think it's very good, it's well-done, and comprehensive, and very thorough, I enjoyed reading it, actually.
Thank you.
And especially the recommendations. I wonder if any of the project team has anything further they want to say? Yeah, Chris does.
I think, just to remind you, it was a very positive experience. We knew that we were going to hear something from you, but the goal in the end is to partner, and to provide our services. Partner's have positive...
I do want to ask you, is this report available electronically, then?
Sure.
Actually, Jenny's already scheduled.
Yep, okay.
I'll forward it to you. We originally got it in electronic copy, so I'll send one to the four of you. I thought you guys got it electronically.
Well, I think I received a hard copy, probably because my server was full again.
I know.
All right, so our clerk does have it.
Jeff, I want to thank you very much, you really helped me out.
Thank you.
I'm only an alternate on this commission, but, well, I got to fill in when somebody else don't. But I feel like I've got a direction to go. It's helped a lot of my confusion I've had over the years, and now I'm on a straight path.
Good, that's good to hear, thank you.
Can I, I'm sorry, can I jump in? I'd like to echo what everybody else has said, but then I also have a question. You had made mention, Teresa, about Jeff attending our meeting on the 26th. Is that something that he might be able to do via phone, or do we request his presence?
I said that Anisa's going to talk to him, and see what they can work out.
All right, sounds good, thank you.
I don't know, I think I used up all my good favors, my extra questions.
I think that document took about an additional eight hours of work, so just, you know, just...
The only thing I wanted to say, too, and, you know, I know it probably sounds like a broken record, but I've gone through audits and evaluations, and I know they can be stressful. On top of the job that everybody does is stressful at the fire department, so I really want to thank everyone for their participation, and really, it was the fire department and the city staff that did all of the hard work, and Jeff, you know, we got the report, and we get to read it and ask questions and everything, but it was really all of you that put it together, and I really appreciate that, and thank you, Jeff, for all the phone calls and extra questions and the time that you spent, because I really think that it helped me, too. I don't know if I'm on the right path yet, but I have a direction to go, and so, thank you, and thank you to everyone, and thank you for all the support you've given me personally over the past few weeks, so, all right.
So, each of you can...
Does there's a reason, anything further, otherwise a motion to adjourn would be in order?
Motion here.
Motion by Leonard, second by Beth, to adjourn. All in favor, say aye for the town board?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried, whoever adjourned for the town?
Motion to adjourn for the city of Milton.
So, move.
Is there a second?